Good to see you all. I want to say a special thank you to our Conroe High School Student Council that was out front. And we have a couple of representatives here, but if you please give our appreciation to all of those students that are in the hallway as well. So we thank them. We will start our meeting tonight with our budget hearing. We will have a presentation by CFO Darren Rice. At the conclusion of his presentation, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the budget hearing. This would not be the time for those of you that have signed up for public comment to speak. It'll be specifically on the budget and then as we enter into the regular meeting, then we will have our normal public comment section at that time. So at this time, we'll turn it over to Ms. Rice.
Yes, we need to thank one of the members of the board, Dr. Knoll, community member. It is my pleasure to present 2020, 2021 proposed budget. First, I'd like to take this time to thank the financial office staff that has seen the segment of events. So I would like to thank the financial district tonight. We have Karen Butterworth and Miss Candace Sowers. So thank you very much. I would also like to thank CISD board for participating in our new road work jobs on the budget. This process began back in February at our first group workshop. We appreciate your input and guidance in the workshops we have over the last seven months. Mr. Sanders, thank you for participating in the compensation committee. And Mr. Andrew, thank you for participating in the benefits committee. Both of these programs are critical to financial success of this district. With the onset of COVID-19 pandemic, many financial challenges have arisen for the country, state, and the district. In this presentation, you will see how the leadership of our board and Dr. Knoll has the district in very financial shape to handle its challenges. You know, the information that is coming out of the state budget does not look so good. So we must plan for reductions in state funding in the next legislative session. This slide shows the additional cost the district has incurred since the onset of COVID-19. And I think it is important to see the ramifications that COVID has had on the budget. Looking at the expenditure side of this slide, the mobile technology communications cost $3 million. And we have purchased several software platforms to help us in the delivery instruction. And we also got site licenses for the technology. On the technology side, we have purchased thousands of homeboats, hotspots, and the data to support the construction. Looking at PPE barriers, on the PPE side, we bought gloves, facial, sleeves, guards, and masks. Looking at cleaning and sanitation, everybody has probably heard the word Block 256. Well, that is the cleaning and disinfectant that we use to de-mist and de-fog our buildings and clean our desks. We've also purchased equipment, de-mistress, clovers, hand sanitizer stations,喷子
And then looking at additional payroll and staff, we've had to hire the custodial staff to clean our buildings. But we also hired additional nurses and additional clinic aides to care for our students at the campus. And now looking at the employee leaves and absences for COVID, we're estimating that that's going to cost us an additional $5 million this next year. So total cost about $11.8 million. On the revenue side of the slide, you can see that the revenue loss is interest revenue. Since COVID came in, interest rates have fallen. We've lost about $1 million there. Game revenue, since we don't have ticket sales, $300,000. Building rental revenue, since we shut down our building rentals, $850,000. Child nutrition revenue, we don't have students coming through the cafeteria lines, $3.5 million. And then transportation funding, we only earn money in transportation if our buses are driving miles and that's cost us about $2 million. So total loss revenue, about $7.6 million. So the grand total of this number is right at $19.5 million. Now, looking at our financial highlights, I'd like to start each of my budget presentations here. We have a new one this month. We just received notice that once again, we received a superior rating for our first report for the year ended August 31st, 2019. And then the district continues to get recognized by the State Comptroller's Office for our transparency presentations. We receive transparency awards for our traditional finances, debt obligations, and contract and procurement presentations. And each one of these presentations can be found on the district's website. Texas Smart Schools, formerly known as the FAST Report. This program was started in the State Comptroller's Office and it highlights success in two dimensions, both academic performance and cost-effective finances. Conroe ISD is one of two districts out of over 1,100 in the state that have received five stars, which is the highest rating you can receive for 11 consecutive years. Our 2018, 2019 ERG ranking, ERG stands for Education Resource Group, and they perform an analysis of the 200 largest districts. And the ranking here is done on academic and financial performance. And Conroe ISD is ranked second in the state, just behind HEB. Each year, we like to compare ourselves to the greater Houston area with our tax rate. As you can see in the red there for 2019, 2020 at $1.23, we were the second lowest tax rate in the greater Houston area. The dark blue columns are the local Montgomery County school districts. And then the green columns, those are our peer districts. And not only do we compare with them financially, but we also compare with them academically. And if we take them only into account, their average tax rate is 15 cents higher than CISD's tax rate. And we're four cents lower than the closest district to us, which is Fort Bend. So we will start taking a look at the major components that drive the budget and they begin with our 2020, 2021 budget objectives. That include to meet the needs for the 2020, 2021 school year. This year, we're opening Stockton Junior High School. We're moving to 12th grade at Grand Oaks High School. We're anticipating 1,500 new students. And we've identified personnel allocation adjustments at the elementary and intermediate schools. We also want to provide a cost of living increase for our employees. And we have to provide funding to meet the requirements of House Bill 3. That includes full day pre-K, our reading academies, dyslexia, CCMR, and special ed programs, just to name a few. And then we have to provide funding for the costs related for COVID-19. We have to support the transition to virtual learning. And then the supplies and equipment for maintaining a safe environment for our students and our staff. Our general fund balance, this chart represents the fund balance of the general fund over the past 12 years. And we ended 2019 at $140 million. This past year, we transferred a total of $32 million from the general fund to the capital maintenance fund. $12 million was to provide funding for the technology in support of the 2019 bond referendum. And then 20 million to establish the capital maintenance fund. Our fund balance analysis, our objective is to maintain an unassigned fund balance of 20% to 25% of the annual budget, which gives us approximately three months' worth of expenses. Our estimated unassigned fund balance at 83120 is $140.1 million, which is 24% of the budget. And $24.7 million over our low end target of 20% of the budget and just $4.1 million under the high end target. So we are in strong financial shape to address the challenges ahead with COVID-19, the start of school, and any upcoming legislative session. Our attendance data, our state revenue estimates and campus expenditure budget allocations rely on our enrollment data. For the upcoming 2020, 2021 budget, we're using an enrollment increase of 1,500 students for a total enrollment of 66,298 students. We're using 94.2% for our average daily attendance. And it's important to note that the expenditure budget is based on enrollment and state funding is provided based on our average daily attendance. This graph just shows our enrollment trend over the last 10 years. It's pretty linear. We're averaging 1,515 students a year. You know, with House Bill 3, there was some change in terms as far as some of our tax rate information. There is the no new revenue tax rate, and it was formerly known as the effective tax rate. And that's a tax rate that would produce the same amount of tax revenue if applied to the same properties taxed in both years. So what does that tax rate not provide for? That tax rate does not provide for 1,500 new students. That tax rate does not provide for the opening of a new school. That tax rate does not provide for the funding for House Bill 3, which full day pre-K alone required 50 additional new teachers. And it does not account for employee raises. The rate to maintain, this is the rate to maintain the same amount of state and local revenue per weighted student that the district received in the school year beginning with the preceding tax year. This tax rate will provide funding for 1,500 new students, but it does not include the opening of new schools. It does not include the funding for the House Bill 3 programs or employee raises. Now, the voter approved tax rate, formerly known as the rollback rate. This tax rate was established by the legislature to cover all the needs, especially growth and the House Bill 3 programs. And then looking at recapture, what we call Robin Hood. And that is current year increase in tax revenue generated from appraisal value growth all goes to the state of Texas in the current year. There is no more one-year lag. And so the local school district does not get that increase. And I got a presentation later on that kind of shows that visually. Our certified property values, our property values grew at 5.71%. And this growth will add about $2.2 billion to our property values, bringing our total to $40.3 billion. The impact on funding is minimal for the general fund for some of the reasons we just discussed. House Bill 3 has compression down to 2.5%, and we'll discuss that in a second, and the Robin Hood. But this is the main source of funding in our debt service fund. So looking at the effect of House Bill 3, and I think this is very important. TEA calculated our MNO tax rate, our MNO compressed tax rate. I think that is very important. We received the information from the appraisal district. We had to submit that information to TEA. They certified the tax rate and they sent us back an approval to move ahead with our tax rate. So I think that is very important. So what effect does that have on our tax rate for this year? This is our 2020, 2021 proposed tax rate. On the MNO side, our tax rate for 2019, 2020 was 97 cents. Our proposed tax rate for 2020, 2021, and this year, we're recommending assessing one additional golden penny, will be at 95.25 cents. That will be a reduction in our tax rate of 1.75 cents. On the debt service side, our tax rate will remain the same at 26 cents for a total tax rate of $1.2125. Once again, a tax rate decrease of 1.75 cents. And just to kind of put it into perspective, this is our tax rate over the last three years. And over the last three years, our tax rate has decreased by 6.75 cents. So now that we've talked about the major components that drive the budget, we will now look at the effect that they have on the budget itself, starting with our 2020, 2021 funding estimate. And this is where we can really get a good visual of what the Robin Hood effect does to our budget. So on the far right column, you're going to see an example of our funding estimate if we had no tax revenue value increase at all. If there was no value increase, our tax revenue increase would be zero. Our state revenue, based on 1,500 student growth, would grow about $25.06 million. This year, we're having to decrease our investment income because interest rates have fallen with the economy downturn. That's $1.73 million. TRS in-kind funds, that's an accounting entry that we must do every year. That's $3.5 million. So our total estimated available funding is $26.83 million. In reality, our values grew at 5.71%. And it was compressed to 2.5% as we just discussed by House Bill 3. So our tax revenue increase compressed to 2.5% generated $14.18 million. However, the state decreases, the state decreases our state funding by the $14.18 million. Dollar for dollar, our revenue decreases. So overall, you can see our total estimated available funding is the same at $26.83 million. And that is how the Robin Hood effect and House Bill 3 affect CISD and our tax values. Now, looking at the expenditure side of the budget, this is our approved 2020, 2021 pay plan. It includes a 3% raise for our teachers, librarians, nurses, and counselors. Our professional staff received a 2.5% raise. Our hourly employees, our administrative support and instructional support, 3.5%. Our auxiliary staff, 3.5%. Bus drivers received a flat $1 raise, and that is equivalent to a 5% raise on the midpoint for them. Our police received a 5% raise with the ability to earn additional certification pay. Our total increase was $12.5 million. But if y'all remember, last year, we had the retention stipend in the budget. So we backed that out of the budget. So if we move that out of the pay raise increase, that gives a total cost of $7.5 million. This is our approved 2020, 2021 teacher hiring schedule. It includes a 3% raise, as we discussed earlier, that's $1,800. And it has a beginning teacher salary of $57,000. Our 2020, 2021 personnel additions, this is for support at the campus level for our 1,500 new students. The opening of 12th grade at Grand Oaks High School, full day pre-K, the opening of Stockton Junior High School. This includes 212 new positions that are made up of 128 teachers, six administrators, eight professionals, and 69 and 1/2 paraprofessionals. Now, to support our campuses, we have 88 new positions and they're mainly in our transportation, police, maintenance, and custodial departments. That is at a total cost of $14.9 million. We have a budget adjustment in there for $4.4 million. As we looked at our budget, we were able to correct that by 4.4. And that leaves us with a total budget increase there of about $10.5 million. So this is our proposed summary expenditure budget increase for 2020, 2021. It's a general pay increase less the retention stipend, $7.5 million. We did increase our substitute pay by $5 per day, that's $300,000. Our additional personnel for growth, this is net of 1,500 students, $10.51 million. Our other expenses that include fuel, utilities, insurance, and COVID expenditures, $2.85 million. Our TRS in-kind funding, this is just the offset to the revenue side, $3.5 million. For total expenditures, $24.66 million. Now, this is the 2020, 2021 proposed budget together. On the revenue side, we have beginning revenue of $555.62 million. Total revenue increase of $26.83 million for estimated total revenue of $582.45 million. On the expenditure side, we had beginning expenditures of $552.33 million. Total estimated expenditure increase of $24.66 million for an estimated total expenditure of $576.99 million. And this leaves us with a potential surplus of $5.46 million. So here's the proposal for the budget surplus. One thing we know is with the economy the way it is and what we're hearing from Austin is that when the legislature meets this next spring, that they will be looking to cut school districts funding. So we have to be prepared for that. And so that is the main focus of that surplus. And then if there's any funds that are available, we'll utilize that to support our capital maintenance fund, possibly reduce any bond debt requirements, and then cover any unforeseen expenditures that the district might have. This pie chart just shows the budget broken down by major object. We're very payroll intensive, people intensive. 87.7% of our budget is in payroll. 4.8% is in contracted services, the largest individual item in there is our utility bill. Supplies and materials is 4.3% of the budget. The largest item in there is fuel for our buses. Equipment and other is 1.5% of the budget. The largest item in there is property insurance. And then our other operating transfers is our $10 million transfer to the capital maintenance fund. So our 2020, 2021 proposed budget is $576,990,426. This is just the format that we will ask the board to adopt the budget in later this evening. So what's next? Traditionally, we adopt the tax rate at this meeting also, but we are postponing that until September 15th, 2020, when we receive our certified values from the appraisal district.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Appreciate that. At this time, we'll give an opportunity for public comment. Once again, this will be public comment just on the budget presentation. If you would like to come up as we reposition here, you're welcome to make your way to the podium. I'm going to ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
I just mainly have a question. I'm assuming this considers that you'll be back in school September 8th. What happens to the budget in the worst case, so you have to do virtual through December? Does that mess up the revenue stream?
Well, it would affect revenue on the revenue side, just as Mr. Rice showed. We wouldn't get funding for buses if we weren't running buses. We wouldn't get the child nutrition funding would decrease. It doesn't change the student-per-student funding, but it would change in those few areas. But we have every intention of being in class on September 8th. Thank you, Stuart. Any other comments? All right, that's going to conclude our budget hearing. Mr. President, if I could have just one second, I know we're, are we back up or not yet? We are having some problems with our stream tonight, so our live stream is struggling. Do we have an ETA, Ms. Lake Lock?
Why don't we take a short?
Yeah, so if we can take a five-minute recess, we'll try to get that restarted. Just want to make sure that we have the board meeting streaming live to the folks that want to be able to see it. So if we can take a quick five minutes and then we'll, we should be ready to get started.
I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a qualm of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. The time is 6:28 PM. We're open with item one, invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'll turn it over to trustee Hudson, please.
If you wish, please stand with me and bow in prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you bestow on all of us each and every day. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on this district over the years. Father, we ask a special blessing on all educators and students, that you keep them safe during these trying times, that you comfort them as only you can. Father, we are so thankful for the kids that are represented here tonight and what they mean to us and what they mean to Dr. Knoll. And we're so appreciative of them. And we ask that you bestow a blessing upon them. Now, Father, guide us and keep us in all that we do. Let our decisions be pleasing unto you, for it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas.
Honor the Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. All right, item 1C, citizen participation. Ms. Goffrey, has anyone registered to address the board? Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. For those who've registered to address the board in accordance with board policy BED, everyone is reminded that this portion of the meeting is not appropriate form for bringing complaints for which a resolution is sought. Before complaints can be submitted to the Board of Trustees as an agenda item, they must be addressed by the following, the appropriate policies and administrative procedures. Also, please keep in mind that the board has an obligation to protect the confidentiality of information that could possibly identify a student. The board cannot permit comments that include student names or any information that might identify a specific student. This prohibition does not apply if the person speaking is the student's parent or guardian or is over the age of 18 and speaking about him or herself. If an issue is mentioned that is on tonight's posted agenda, the board would defer its discussion of the issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For any subject that is not on the board's posted agenda, the board cannot deliberate or make a decision, but it can furnish specific factual information or cite existing policy in response to inquiries. Each person is limited to no more than five minutes for their presentation. This will allow the board to hear from citizens, as well as ensure that the board meeting runs efficiently, as there are many important items on the board agenda that must be considered. Everyone in attendance is reminded to treat all speakers with respect regardless of whether you agree or disagree with the speaker's message. Any person who does not conduct himself or herself accordingly will be asked to leave or will be escorted from the room. Ms. Goffrey, please call your first person.
Amaya Lynch. I'm kind of short. Can y'all hear me?
We can, thank you.
So, dear everyone as a part of CISD admin, thank you for what you've done in order for this school year to start. Thank you for making the last minute changes to over 50,000 students in the CISD school district. Not many know how much hard work you guys do behind the scenes, but just know Conroe High Student Council sees you, and we appreciate everything that you do. Even if we may not see our friends in school this year, we thank you for doing what not only is best for our health, but for our future. This speech would not be completed without a special thanks to the man behind the face of CISD, Dr. Knoll. Dr. Knoll.
Thank God.
Thank you for everything that you have done. Thank you for every update, every live stream, every little thing that you do to help protect families in the CISD school district. Thank you for taking our health and our teachers' health into consideration for this year of uncertainty. I know you made tough decisions for this school year to start virtually, but this will only save us the stress in the long run. We thank you and appreciate all the hard work that you do for this school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. We welcome you back next month as well.
Angel Martinez.
Ms. Martinez.
Mr. Trump.
Mr. Trump.
Hey, everybody. My name is Angel Martinez. I am 17 years young and I'm this year's student, CHS Student Body President. I want to thank each one of you. Y'all work very hard and the community sees it. Dr. Knoll, your hard work and love is shown each time you go on Facebook Lives to introduce your plan to the people of Conroe, Texas. We are all nervous. Conroe took a spin to us all, but took, but look, a room full of leaders leading each other, leaders helping lower the tax rate, getting electronics for students who do not, who do not have the ability of electronics at home. But as we prosper together, we can achieve all. We can reach further than the sky and do our best for the community of beautiful Conroe. As each day goes by, another day of history is written down each morning. Students log into the, into Canvas and prosper and work to push themselves to reach another level of education and comprehension. As I thank you all right now with love, just know that we are all excited for the future, for the plan and the dreams. Thank you for working hard for the families of Conroe, the Woodlands, Montgomery, Canyon Creek, because we know your love is endless. Much love, Angel Martinez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trump. Stick 'em Tigers.
Matthew Wiley.
Hi, good afternoon, Board. I just want to, I came last month and I just want to express my opinion again this month. The schools really need to get reopened in-person education. My experience as a parent with the, the kids and the online learning, this, even just this week, has not been good. You know, my kids are fifth and sixth grade. It's difficult, they don't type, they don't have a type. You know, it's just, it's a lot of difficulty for them and they're not getting very much time in front of their teachers. I would doubt either of them is getting more than two hours a day in front of the teachers. And as the Attorney General had come out with, you know, a few weeks ago, ultimately it's y'all's decision rather than the school is going to be open. It's not going to be the Board of Health's decision, it's not going to be Montgomery's County. So, you know, the buck stops with you guys to make sure that the school district gets, you know, opened back up on September 8th and, or whenever y'all decide to do it. And I hope that's sooner rather than later, because the kids do need the in-person education. They don't need to be parked in front of a computer screen for six hours a day. Ultimately, the school is here for the kids. It's not a, you know, it's, it's to educate them and I don't feel like they're getting that right now. And we'd also just like to, you know, kind of point out, you know, that there's, you know, we, we go through these, you know, we, I know everybody's trying, trying to get things done and trying to make it happen, but this just isn't, you know, this just isn't working for the kids. They're not, they're not learning and, you know, my kids have a lot of advantages. And I know that if my kids are struggling with, with getting any kind of meaningful education out of this, I'm sure that kids who don't have, you know, professional parents and, you know, don't have, you know, a good home environment are having a much more difficult time in, in being at school at home than, than my kids are. So I just hope that, you know, this is the last school board meeting I end up coming to that doesn't have a actual in-person education going on, because, you know, the kids need to be back in, the kids need to be back in school. And, uh, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Christie Swoboda.
Good evening, Dr. Knoll, President Williams, and the School Board members. I'm Christie Swoboda, Vice President of Conroe TSTA, Texas State Teachers Association. And I'm here to express our thanks, because the Board and Dr. Knoll are actively listening, not just to teachers, not just to parents, but to everyone, and about safely reopening our schools. As a part-time paraprofessional in the clinic, I know every day something different changes. And every day, we are making accommodations to get people back to school as safely as possible. I know parents want their kids back in school, but I don't think parents understand how desperately teachers want their students back in school as well. It's not the same and we know it and we miss them. I know it's a little late, but I've had some things going on, but I did want to also say thank you again to Dr. Knoll and Ms. Blakelock for the wonderful job that they did taking care of the Teacher of the Year program for us while we were during the shutdown in, in May and that, you know, you're welcome to steal my thunder again next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Outstanding. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate everyone's comments and please understand that we hear you. All right, next item on the agenda is two, Consent Agenda. Gentlemen, I have received no request to remove anything.
I move the adoption of the Consent Agenda as posted.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion that's been properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, John. Item three, a consider approval of application of beginning of year alternate reading instruction, instrument requiring waiver due to COVID-19. Dr. Knoll.
All right, I'll have our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Dr. Edith Upshaw, present.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll. As required by the Texas Education Code 28006, Conroe ISD administers a reading instrument approved by the Commissioner at the beginning of seventh grade to each student who did not demonstrate passing rate on the sixth-grade reading star. The sixth-grade reading star assessment was not administered last year due to the pandemic. So the district is using locally assessments to identify students who will likely, who have not have mastered this test last year and who must be assessed this fall and are starting to be assessed by our teachers. So we are coming to you with another waiver to be able to seek your approval for the students of this coming year to take the 2020 assessment called the AIMS Web, and it's more further described in your item. We have used this assessment in the past for several years. This assessment used to be on the Commissioner's list, but it's not this year. We do believe this assessment is appropriate right now for the environment of both remote and in-person. So we ask and ask you to please consider us being able to apply for this waiver.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I have a question. You just, you said it wasn't any longer on his approval list?
Yes, sir.
Why did we, why did we choose one off the lit? I'm sure there's a good reason, I just, I just curious.
Because there are four options on the assessment list and one is computer-based and would take a very long time to administer and it's not really accessible for, for both options. Two of them are not, they would cost the district additional funding. And the TMSFA, which we will be administering next year, which is on this, is again, not conducive. It's an in-person, one-on-one with each child.
Very good, thank you.
All right, all in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Upshaw, really appreciate it. Item B, received 20, secondary 2020, summer school report.
All right, our Assistant Superintendent for High Schools, Mr. Greg Colson.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll. It's a pleasure tonight to be able to provide you with a quick look at summer school 2020. It didn't exactly happen like we expected it to. We started planning in January and February like we do every year, planning on face-to-face instruction. By late March, it became very apparent that that was not going to happen, so we moved forward with planning a virtual option for those students needing to go to summer school. We felt like it was very important to continue to offer these summer opportunities for students to both recover credit and for those students wanting to accelerate in math and those who wanted to take classes to allow more flexibility in their schedules during the regular school year, along with our extended school year services to our special needs students. These programs would not have been possible without three very important people and I'd like to introduce them to you at this time. Our summer school principals were Victoria Brinkman for the junior high, Brad Mylum for the high school, and Lizette Fernandez for ESY, if you'd stand and be recognized. I can't tell you what a wonderful job they did in leading this program. It's a little bit different leading a virtual school. And the hours that they spent on the phone, helping teachers understand the technology, countless hours, and we wouldn't have been able to do it without their, their leadership. I'd also like to recognize Dr. Edith Upshaw and her team of coordinators in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, who basically wrote curriculum on short notice for summer school sessions. The lessons that we learned during summer school have proven very helpful for us as we ventured into online learning this fall. So it was a good, a good trial run for us. The first, we offered basic programs, high school initial credit courses, high school credit recovery courses, online accelerated math, those for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who wanted to accelerate in math, junior high's credit recovery and that's so they could move on to junior, to high school if they had failed a course in, in eighth grade. And then our extended school year services. To kind of give you a recap, we started on June 8th with the first, well, actually, we started the first group in late April. That was our accelerated online group for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Traditionally, that's been a blended model of online and also face-to-face, but it went completely online this year. The rest of the summer program started on June 8th. In this summer, oh, sorry, we served 568 students in the district high school program. Of those 568, 240 were enrolled in credit recovery, with 199 of those students earning back the credit that they needed for that course. Now, this reflects students who did not complete the course or withdrawn for non-attendance. We found and students found, although we told them going into this, this was not going to be like the fourth nine weeks and we all, which we offered a lot of grace for students, this was going to be a more rigorous curriculum as we were rewarding initial credit, in, in both this case and an initial credit. So several of them chose not to continue, but we, the ones that did were very successful. We had 328 enroll for initial credit and of those 328, 321 were awarded credit. Of that 328, 133 of them were enrolled in U.S. History Dual Credit and earned both high school credit for U.S. History as well as college credit through Lone Star College. We're, we're really pleased with that. That is a challenge every year to find qualified teachers who are employable both by the school district and the college, because that has to be the combination there. We had 176 intermediate and junior high students enrolled in the accelerated math program. We had 65 students participate in the extended school year. And we had 38 students enroll in the junior high program. Numbers this year are down a little bit, a couple of reasons. I think, as I mentioned, there was a lot of grace being offered, especially at the junior high level in the fourth nine weeks, so we didn't have as many students fail a course and have to go to summer school to be promoted to ninth grade. And I think some parents figured out at the end of the nine weeks, the fourth nine weeks, that maybe online learning was not the thing for their child at that time and it wasn't successful in the fourth nine weeks and they chose not to enroll them in the summer program as a result of that. Thanks to the efforts of our teachers, we were able to be very successful. About 98% of our students who took courses and completed them were successful and rewarded credit. A look at the financial summary, again, this is a little bit different than most years. Local sources funded our ESY program, the tuition-based program. Our expenses were, we took in $215,000, $215,722, which we had to rely upon the general fund to fund $83,590. And we try to make that as close to paying for itself as we can, but this year was a little bit different. But again, we thought it was a very successful venture. We served over 671 students via remote learning over the summer program. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Appreciate it. Any questions, John, or comments? Outstanding, thank you. Appreciate everyone getting it done despite the challenges that we have. I know summer school virtual is uncharted territory as most of this stuff, but you guys shined through it all, so kudos to everyone, Greg, and Mr. Colson and your team. That being said, let's continue on to planning and construction. Item five, I'm sorry, item four, receive capital improvement update.
Foster. Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll. It's my pleasure to bring you an update on our capital improvements we have underway throughout the district. I'm going to start you with Hope Elementary School down in the Canyon Creek feeder zone. I'm happy to report that this building is on time, on schedule. Scheduled to open in August of '21, so about this time next year, we should be welcoming students into that campus. You can see from this shot that the roofing progress is about halfway done with the, the concrete deck. The exterior walls are in progress, the neighborhood is in progress. You can see they're building lots of homes around us. On the inside of that building, or rather, around the front door, I mean, the structure is up. I was like what I described last month. The next big milestone for this project is to dry it in, which will happen over the next, probably two months or so. So it is on schedule, scheduled to open in August of 2021. So moving over to Washington Junior High School, which is a conversion to Washington High School. So I'm happy to report it is ready for instruction. So the pictures we showed you guys last month showed some holes in the walls and other stuff where we were waiting on some materials to show up and it did show up. So we're able to move the administrators in, get them in, get their teachers in, get the classroom set up. Whoa, that's gracious. Get the classroom set up, so it is ready for instruction when the students return en masse in September. I'm trying to be careful.
Have you careful?
That'd be quiet.
Glenlock Elementary, which was one of our Campus Renovation 2020 projects, that's one of the major scopes of work we did there. At Glenlock Elementary, we took everything from the ceiling up out of that building this summer. So since school ended at the end of May to when school started, when the teachers returned in, in August, we were able to get all those systems returned, back in place, back powered up. We did a main switchgear change-out over this past weekend and we got that building operational, so it is ready for instruction when the students come back. You can see from our pictures here, everything's in, clean, painted, and looks good on the serving line. Everything is ready for students when they return. Again, another campus renovation project is Kaufman Elementary, where we did the additional paving for the parent drop-off loop, so we can get cars off of North Ridge Forest. So you can see that paving, this, this picture is a couple of weeks old, so the paving's been done for a while. Grass has been planted and been established over the past couple of weeks and we are waiting for the students to return in September. So we also did some pavement improvements behind the Woodlands Transportation Center, which is, the pavement is down, all the lanes are open to the bus traffic and the student traffic, teacher traffic or other, this driveway serves the backside of Wilkerson Intermediate, the Woodlands Transportation Center, and Knox Junior High School. So by the end of this month, they'll have the curbs and all the side areas dressed up and they'll be out of that and completely off of it by the end of August, which would meet our original timeline and be on schedule. Moving on to Runyon Elementary, which is our PE classroom additions. This one has a PE classroom, library, and some pre-K classrooms to get that campus situated correctly. So you're looking at the building slab for the pre-K section of that building. The steel for that, for the whole project arrived on Monday, so it'll start going vertical and this building is actually scheduled to turn over during the winter break. So when students return from the winter break, we'll be having class in the new pre-K classrooms and their new dedicated gymnasium space and library. At York Junior High, we're expanding that building to meet the growing needs of the population that will attend York Junior High. See here, we've been working on the pavement around the building, which is required by the fire code. We get fire trucks all the way around that building now. So we've been working on building foundations in the top part of this picture. You start to see the holes for the building foundations, so that progress, that work is underway. The utilities to serve that building have been upgraded, included, underground, covered back up. So we're working on the building slabs and getting ready for the building steel, which show, should stow up on this job right around the end of September, first of October. It is on schedule and York is scheduled to turn over in August of 2021. At the Woodlands College Park High School, this is a classroom addition for College Park to hopefully get us out of the portable business at that campus. So like York, we've been working on the pavement areas to make that campus usable during the course of the construction. So College Park is, again, working on the building foundations and the building slab. Steel for that building is set to show up in the next several weeks and we're going to turn that building over for use in December of 2021. At the Woodlands High School is another classroom addition to help us eliminate portables from that campus as well. Just like College Park and York, we're working in the building foundations. Over the past couple of weeks, we've been working with Entergy Texas to relocate some of the main power feeds to this end of that building, as that will allow us to build, do the work for this building. Again, they're working on the building slabs and over the next several weeks, the steel will show up at this building and it will start going vertical very soon. Again, that, this project turns over in August of 2021. Moving on to our Safety and Security Project, which is a district-wide scope of work. Our 2020 addition is really over in East County in several locations. Like I said, there's not a whole lot to see, but you're looking at a new security monitor in the, in the front vestibule. We've upgraded burglar alarm panels, upgraded some of the other systems that you don't see, but we interact with on the safety and security side for those buildings. That work is on schedule and the contractor's working overnight and weekends now that teachers and staff are back in the building and they'll be working through the end of December. And we'll bring you the 2021 installment and that should be in the January board meeting for approval to keep that project moving throughout the district. And that is our update.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Any questions?
I'm in, gentlemen.
Outstanding, John. You guys stay in busy. For sure. All right, item five, Business and Finance, consider award of RFP 20-06-04 AC Filter Media. Media.
All right, Mr. Reeves.
There he is.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we are recommending that the board consider awarding RFP number 20-06-04 AC Filter Media to Clean Air Filter Service and Sales for an estimated annual expenditure of $80,000. Requests for proposals pertaining to AC Filter Media for the district were emailed to registered vendors through the electronic e-bidding website, posted on the C I S D purchasing website, and advertised two times in the courier. Vendors were asked to provide pricing for various filter media used in HVAC equipment throughout the district facilities and shall include all costs of complete services required. Three vendors submitted a response. The prices are to be effective for one year, automatically renewing annually for two additional one-year terms through August of 2023. Proposals were evaluated by the C I S D maintenance department and reviewed by the purchasing department, with funds provided in the general fund. Recommendation for award is noted, and at this time, we recommend your approval.
So move.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr..
Mr. Reeves, have we used this vendor before?
Yes, sir.
We have.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're, we're fine with their quality.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. I just noticed their prices were considerably cheaper. They obviously like doing business with us.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
This is something you don't really think of, AC filters, huh?
Yeah, I'll tell you something else you don't think of. I think we've got either one or two, it's amazing, people, that they do this all year long, and they just start over again. It's like painting a ship, they just start on, start again.
Right.
It's amazing how many air filters we have in this district.
What happened, yeah.
I thought their bids were very competitive.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Consider approval of, what's that?
Proctorio.
You're not going to give me today?
Not today.
All right, go ahead, you got it. I'm done.
Tonight, we are recommending that the board approve the selection of Proctorio Incorporated for an estimated annual expenditure of approximately $160,000 for the purchase of the online test security tool of Proctorio. Proctorio will provide a greater level of test security for the district's remote high school students. It integrates with the district's learning management system, Canvas, and provides security for the district's remote high school students to take their exams. Some of the main features include a lockdown browser, plagiarism detection, and identity, identity verification, and are critical tools for the district's virtual learning program. Since the board retains the authority to approve purchases for which the cost, or aggregate cost, is $50,000 or more to a single vendor over the course of the fiscal year, purchasing this product through the district's inter-local contract with the Central Texas Purchasing Alliance, through the K D I S D contract for software products and online subscriptions, was determined to be the method of purchase that provided the best value for the district. Funding will be provided from the general fund, and at this time, we request the board approve the use of this vendor and authorized payment to the vendor up to $160,000.
Move, approve it.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
You mentioned it integrates with Canvas. Are we concerned about integration with CSOL, or?
This is, this is for high school.
Okay, just for high school.
Just for high school.
Okay, okay. I didn't catch the question. Thank you.
And I'll invite Ms. Terry Ross to come up. Terry's here, she's the technical expert. I know you had a couple of other questions.
We have one from Mr. Hubert Dear. Go ahead, sir.
So my question is, is eventually, when we go back to school, and we're not, and maybe it's next year, I, I don't know how long our program is going to be for the online version. I understand how it works now, but I guess my point is, is this product going to be obsolete to us once we eventually go back face-to-face 100%?
Well, it does have the additional test security that we don't currently have. What we currently use is a product called Respondus, which is a lockdown browser. And what a lockdown browser does is it-
Can you take your mask off? I mean, just while you're talking.
Certainly. It keeps you from having to, it, it stops the student from opening other tabs or other browsers, so they have to be on there, which works okay when you're in a classroom. It doesn't work remotely, because while you know they're not opening another tab, you don't know that they're not using their phone, or another laptop, or another device, it doesn't provide any security remotely. We felt better about it when we were in person. So this provides a great deal more security in the remote environment. As to whether or not we will still need that level of security when we move, move back to everybody being in person, I just don't know yet. Once you get used to something, it gets hard to back off of it. So it's going to be a question of how much value the teachers find in it.
Mr. Reeves, you, did you mention the subscri-, subscription, or is it?
It's, it's an annual subscription.
It's an annual subscription. So if it dies, it dies.
It's an annual subscription. If we don't need it after this year, and we're all back in school, and we can switch back to just the lockdown, which is significantly less expensive, we will do that. But at this point, I don't know that where we'll be in the future.
But this is an annual subscription for just 12 months, then? It's not a three-year?
It is. No, it's an annual, you have to, we have to purchase most software anymore as an annual.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Ms. Ross, what, could you mention other, maybe higher learning institutions that are using this?
Oh, certainly. Most, all of the universities in this area that use Canvas, for example, the entire University of Texas system uses Proctorio, Baylor uses Proctorio, there's, there's a few others, but definitely all of the University of Texas system uses it for their remote education, because it does have that ability to, they have to identify themselves on a camera, and it does look for things like use of a phone in the area where they're Googling the questions that are on the test. It, it will stop that test if it detects that. So it's, it, it provides a great deal of security for our remote users to kind of level the playing field between the remote users and the kids that are on campus with a teacher in front of them. We want to make sure that everybody has a level playing field.
I knew there were other universities that were using the system, I just wasn't sure if, if we were.
Yeah.
The annual subscription answered my question, is what I needed to hear. Thank you.
And this has been one of the major questions that have come in to Mr. Coulson's office, specifically from high school families with GPA implications, and-
Sure.
Really, students and families of in-person kids want to make sure that they're not going to be at a GPA disadvantage, where students at home may have an opportunity to, to cheat on a test, and their students wouldn't. And so this is our attempt to make sure that all our grades are valid.
And we're not purchasing it below the high school level. The high school people will have Respondus available to them for the in-person use if they would like to do that. I mean, below the high school, sorry, excuse me, below high school will have Respondus available to them for lockdown.
The collegiate use of it was, was pretty cool, but does LSU use it?
No, they're still buying the test.
I'm going to defer my boot until-
Do they take tests at LSU? I don't even know.
But I would be honest, I wouldn't have liked to.
If you don't want to win, that's your problem, right?
Thank you so much.
We have one more question, now go ahead, Mr. Hubert.
Mr. Reeves, how soon, I, I didn't catch how soon we'll be able to implement it.
Immediately.
No.
Next week, okay, thank you.
That's pretty interesting. All right, gentlemen, we have motions, discussions, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Reeves, outstanding job. Ms. Terry, I appreciate you. Consider approval application of coronavirus relief funding.
All right, Mr. Rice.
Who's that?
Yes, good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to recommend the Board of Trustees authorize the district to apply for the coronavirus, coronavirus relief funding through the Texas Department of Energy Management. The coronavirus, coronavirus relief funding is authorized under Title V of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, or CARES Act. The purpose of the funding is to assist school districts with the cost related to COVID-19. The funding will be used to cover expenditures incurred between March 1st, 2020, and May 20th of 2020, that were necessary to respond to the public health emergency and to facilitate distance learning, including technology, and developing online learning capabilities necessary to continue educational instruction in, in response to the COVID-19-related school closures. Conroy ISD is eligible to receive $2,261,470. At this time, I recommend your approval.
Okay, gentlemen, we have a motion, who has?
Second.
Okay. All right, discussion. All in favor?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Do we get to keep 100% of this money, or is this some of that keep 10% in reserve for private school money?
We will get to keep 100%.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rice, outstanding. Chapter 49, local revenue.
All right, Mr. Rice?
Yes, tonight, we're recommending the Board of Trustees select option three, purchase attendance credits from the state to reduce its local wealth in excess of entitlement. Conroy Independent School District's local yield per student in weighted average daily attendance, or WADA, is estimated to exceed the Tier Two, Level Two guaranteed yield of $49.28, as established by the T E C. Districts identified with local revenue in excess of entitlement are not required to pay recapture unless their adopted tax rate exceeds the compressed rate plus eight pennies. Under current law, a district with local revenue in excess of entitlement has five options available to reduce the district's revenue level under T E C Chapter 49. We recommend option three, which is purchase of average daily attendance credit as provided by subchapter D. Since Conroy ISD's proposed tax rate does not include any copper pennies, that means any copper pennies over five, I mean, any pennies over our golden pennies, which generate Tier Two, Level Two funding, this is simply an administrative procedure. T E A recommends that districts with estimated local revenue in excess of entitlement choose option three, since it is the least extreme of the choices available. The district feels that option three is the most appropriate selection. I recommend your approval.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
All in favor?
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Let's see their approval. All right, let's, let's discuss budget. Do you have to go through this whole budget presentation again?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, sir, I don't. Say what?
We were about to be looking for a new CFO. We were about to have a vacancy in here tonight.
I remember what they said, left and right.
I'm sorry, I got to go.
Gentlemen, unless you guys want to go through that, let's consider approval of-
He's got just a short, he's not going to do the whole presentation.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Rice.
Yeah, it is my pleasure to recommend the Board of Trustees approve the 2020, 2021 official school budget, as discussed in our budget workshops, as provided in the public hearing, as presented in the public hearings, and as recommended by the district-level planning and decision-making committee. At this time, I recommend your approval of the 2020, 2021 official school budget.
I second the motion.
Motion, second, discussion.
I just have a question, I, I believe I know the answer, but I want to make sure for our audience. So we're approving only the budget right now.
Yes, sir.
Next month, we will approve the tax rate.
Yes, sir.
As recommended. If we don't approve the tax rate as recommended, that will change our budget.
It will, it will not change the actual expenditure budget, no, sir.
No, it won't change the expenditure budget, but it will change our budget.
It will change the budget.
It will become a deficit budget, potentially.
That's my understanding.
Yes, sir.
Because revenues will be different.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Would this be the appropriate time to discuss the golden penny versus the copper?
I will be happy to answer.
Because a lot of people, as we've discussed, are kind of confused, and you did mention how we have no copper pennies over our five golden pennies, I think I, that was a quote you mentioned. So if you, if you wouldn't mind, just maybe like a two or three minute or less-
Sure.
Quick synopsis, readers digest.
You know, the, the T E A calculates our compressed rate, and we have eight cents available to the district, which are considered golden pennies. We're proposing accessing five of those pennies. Currently, we do four. We're proposing to assess one additional penny, and those are golden pennies, so that is five golden pennies. So before, copper pennies start at pennies above eight, and the difference between a golden penny and a copper penny is the amount of funding that the state provides the district back. With golden pennies, it's dollar for dollar. If we, if we-
Fifty-fifty.
Correct.
Right.
So, so if, 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 if we add one penny that is golden, it generates $4 million. The state funds us an additional $4 million, makes that golden penny, we used to call them super pennies.
Right.
Eight million dollars. And a copper penny would just be slightly less than that.
And we're entertaining one.
One additional golden penny, yes, sir.
All right.
And, and, and just so, as a, I've, I've been looking at this, it looks like if we cut even a single penny off that, that then we have to raise that extra, the 4 million local.
Yes.
4 million from Austin, golden penny.
Yes.
Copper penny, 4 million local, but if we cut a penny, it gets rid of the golden penny, and so we've got to come up with that other-
Well, we only have golden pennies. We have no copper pennies, we're not proposing anything.
Well, that's what I said, if we, if we tried to, we can't cut a copper, we have to cut a gold.
Yes, sir. We will be cut, cutting a golden penny.
Okay, I just want to get that on the record as, as-
The first penny that we would ever, that we could access to cut, this, it's the, the state has built the formula to force local school boards into accessing these golden pennies to generate more funding, to fund the, all the mandates that were included in House Bill 3 and beyond, from full-day pre-K to the reading academies, dyslexia, all that. So that's, they give us access to this additional golden penny. But yes, any future, and that's, that's part of the challenge of Darren's earlier definitions of, you know, the, the maintenance tax rate and moving forward, that's not how school districts are funded. We're not funded purely on local revenue, where you could say you could freeze it.
Yeah, but we used to at least get to set our own tax rate, now we don't even get to.
Correct, yeah. So, so now, in order to, to deal with growth and additional mandates, they've given us this access to golden pennies. But it, that is important to know, is any cut cuts from state funding as well. So it is a double hit, if you, if you cut any, so-
Sure, okay.
It's a, just the way the, the formula's built.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rice.
By my calculations, I was, was looking at it, if it is, I know it's dangerous, John, but if we do cut it by one, you're talking about a deficit of somewhere around four or five million dollars. And out of curiosity, have we, have we ever passed a budget that was a deficit?
We have never adopted a deficit budget.
Never adopted a deficit budget, no.
Well, that would be horrifically bad.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Today's not today.
All right, gentlemen, we have a motion, a second, we have a motion, a second, and it's discussion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rice, outstanding job.